...Guanhin is called to order. I would like to ask if Speaker Pangolinan, you can lead us in prayer.
Si Dus Masi, Madam Speaker. Fanogifantulu hulu den pantekum. Anta fona i duosta. Ginani tata ilahinyen den spiritu san tu amen. Duus tata. Mangagi amtaalugu ini idja donkulu nagrosha binat yo ni salud momi ni gagaiga unanayam para sini ususteni hinasu igunaidza deni hinengi i finanagwemu dan i emplun ilaimo asisus anistaba guini gitano. Ingagagona tolui tempu binatanam dan binspeyusam gihojoi bidonya dan binspia tai manu ni sini binsegu lokui i bidonya ni agwaidza tolui tau tau mu guini gitano. Aninsegu hishti ma xehozi himfana estranghenyu parentis sempri gaigina magim gresun momi ja imbaba ja naiksepta igunaidza deni minaulik. Eno ingagago para foguna oni den tolui tempu giniman gaigiam guini. Si Dus Masi. Ginani tata ilahinyen den spiritu san tu amen.
Thank you very much. Senator Munia Barnes, can you lead us in the recitation of Inifresi?
Inifresi. Ginima stakilunggi korosono. Ginima stakilunggi korosono. Zari masfigu nani gishanahu. Uufresen maisetu. Vada vayuputehi. Zenu difendi. Hinengi. Ikutura. Ilengwahi. Iaidi. Ihannu. Zanitano. Chamoro. Ni miratrapu. Dinretsu. Gininasuus tata. Esti uufitma. Gihilu i biblia. Zanibenderahu. Ibandera Guahan.
And I can ask Senator Morrison if he can lead us in the singing of the Guanhim and Chamor and Senator McCready, the National Anthem.
(Singing) Aro ita mo. Uru ita mo. Tanta yacna. Nani toli. Ara lihona. Ara lihoyi. Abi va ihlasen. Ara. Ara lihona. Ara lihoyi. Abi va ihlasen. Ara. Tolu ita mo. Ara lihota. Zani ilai. Nabi. Dusha. O chad i ligu. Na ra anta fuha. Duus poten. Ihi islam. O chad i ligu. Na ra anta fuha. Duus poten. Ihi islam. And you see. I'm not to leave her. But so far. We're here. At the twilight's end. We're stars. And night stars. To the perilous fight. For the red blocks we watched. Were so gallant we dreamed. And the rockets ran clear. The rocks bursting in air. Gave proof to the night. That our flag was still there. Oh, say that star-spangled banner. That had never yet been seen. For the land of the free. And the home of the brave.
Thank you very much. Can the clerk please take your call?
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Uggan. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duas. Senator Limtiaco. Senator McCready. Senator Morrison. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rodriguez. Senator San Nicholas. Speaker Wampat. Senator Yamashita. Madam Speaker, there is a form.
Thank you very much. The majority whip, you are recognized. Senator Duas, I mean, uh, Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, move to adopt today's legislative session agenda dated February 14, 2014.
On that motion, without any objections, so adopt today's legislative session agenda. No objections, so order.
Madam Speaker, I move to that we approve the Legislative Journal dated January 27 through February 3, 2014, subject to corrections.
On the motion then to approve the Legislative Journal, subject to corrections for January 27, 2014 through February 2nd, 2014, no objections, so order. You may continue, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. There are communications and petitions, and I move that they be appended in today's session journal.
On that motion, are there any objections? No objections, so order. Thank you. You may continue, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. There are messages from Imagalahin Guahan, and I move that these messages from Imagalahin Guahan also be appended in today's session journal.
Hearing, no objections, so order. Senator, you are still recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, there are reports of standing committees, and I also move that they be appended in today's session journal.
Hearing, no objections, so order.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that bills introduced number 269-32 LS and 270-32 COR through 276-32 COR be given its first reading.
On the motion then of bills introduced, numbers 269-32 LS and 270-32 COR through 276-32 COR be given its first reading, are there any objections? No objections, so order.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that resolutions introduced number 310-32 LS through 314-32 LS and 315-32 COR through 320-32 COR be given its first reading.
On the motion that resolutions introduce 310-32 LS through 314-32 LS and 315-32 COR through 320-32 COR be given its first reading, are there any objections? No objections, so order.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that certificates introduced number 104-32 COR through 106-32 COR be given its first reading.
On the motion, hearing objections, so order.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to excuse the members not present for today's session.
On that motion, without any objections, so order.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that all congratulatory, commendatory, and condolence resolutions and legislative certificates introduced today for the remainder of this legislative session be considered first read and adopted to allow legal counsel to make technical corrections and to add all senators as co-sponsors.
On that motion, no objections, so order.
Madam Speaker, I also move to place our resolution 316-32 as substituted on the session agenda.
Okay. Well, that's, well, let me get, we are on, on motions and, okay, so what is the resolution number?
316-32.
316-32 COR as substituted by the sponsor, no objections, so order.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Speaker Pangolinan, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I also would like to move then that bill number 245-32 COR, as amended by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Land, Public, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation and Land, and further amended on the floor, be placed in the second reading, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 245 was a bill that was voted on by this body during the last session. When the bill was placed in the voting file of the body, the bill, the copy of the bill that was placed in the voting file was the unengrossed copy that was not amended, that was, that was amended on the floor, but it did not include the amendment. And so when the bill was transmitted to the governor, we noticed that it was not the body's intent to send to the governor the original bill, basically, and it was to send the body, the bill as amended on the floor. But to be certain of that, Madam Speaker, each of the members had in their voting file and in their hand when casting the vote, the unengrossed copy. So what this bill is now is the engrossed copy. It would be to place it in the second reading file and then move it to, to the voting file or the third reading file for voting, so that there's absolutely clear on the version that was officially passed by this body to be transmitted to the governor. The bill was recalled from the governor's office prior to the governor acting on the bill, so it now brings it back and back into our court for us to retransmit the corrected copy.
Please make sure that is, with notwithstanding, of course, the House.
Yes, so it's notwithstanding the, the House rules that Bill 245-32 has, of course, amended by the committee and further amended for the floor, be placed in the second reading file, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much on that motion, without any objections, so order. Senator San Nicholas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the objections of Imagalahin Guahan, I'd like to make a motion to place veto Bill Number 268 on the voting file and be afforded an opportunity to speak on the measure.
He hasn't even spoken. He's, he's still speaking in the motion. You do that after, oh, when I'm, after all the discussion is done, then I will call for that motion when it's ready to go down. Yes. Yes.
Do you object to the motion?
You're objecting, yes, but it's, it's not going down yet. I will call for that. This is only for him to speak on it, and then, before it goes down, then I would pose that question for, before it goes down, and then your objection would be appropriate, and then we will call for the motion. Okay? Yes.
Is it spoken on the hearing?
No. It's, we are still on motions, and the motion for any veto bill normally would go down to the voting file, and that's his motion, notwithstanding the governor's objections, and he's going to speak on it, and then, after it's done, then I will call for that, that vote.
Is that part of the speech going to be spoken?
That's, my dear, that, that's what we've been, been doing. I'm going to allow him to speak.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to request that those who are objecting speak into the microphone so that, for the record, they can be recognized as filing their objections and making all of these requests and inhibiting my ability to speak on the matter.
Well, I'm recognizing you to, to speak, so, on the motion, yes. And everybody will get an opportunity, so those who are objecting to the motion then can stand up, be recognized to speak against the motion. That's standard procedure. You may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, one of the most important parts of governing, especially in a democracy, is being able to actually speak, and I appreciate the opportunity to be afforded that basic right with respect to my request to override the veto of Bill Number 268-32. Madam Speaker, the saga of Bill 268 began over three weeks ago when we received the proposed, I hesitate to call it, pay plan, when we, when we received the proposed pay adjustment plan from Imagalahin Guahan that included recommendations from the Hay Group as well as a whole bunch of additional recommendations that were added on by the Department of Administration. When we received this recommended pay scale, we had a lot of questions. We had two informational hearings. In the first informational hearing, the initial questions started coming out, and then a lot of things became very, very unclear. How much was this going to cost? Where was the money going to come from? How are we going to make sure that we're going to be able to pay for this and not make an empty promise? The responses that we got over the course of both informational hearings were summed up in two basic statements that were never deviated from. The first statement was that this plan submitted by the governor will cost 20 million, and the second statement, when we asked where's that 20 million going to come from, was trust us. Those are all the facts that preceded the introduction of Bill 268. When we worked on Bill 268, we did so being mindful of what we already committed to the pay adjustment, which was $7 million initially in the budget that we passed back in October. We were mindful of our interest, our unending interest, to try and work with the administration to move things forward in a way that is going to be responsible and sustainable. Bill 268 was a piece of legislation crafted by a lot of involvement, senators, staff, trying to make sure that we're going to be implementing something that is fair, something that isn't going to leave anybody out, something that is definitely going to take care of our classified and unclassified employees, but also going to be more responsible so that we're not going way above and beyond what everybody can conclude would be a reasonable and rational expectation. When we introduced Bill 268, we put certain provisions in there to make sure that outcome was what was going to be achieved should the governor sign it into law. Part of those requirements was that we reaffirmed the $7 million that we made available in the budget that we passed in October. We stated that the pay adjustments would be effective February 9, which was the ending of, or the beginning, rather, of that particular pay period in the month of February. We said that if the plan is going to cost more than 7 million to fully implement fairly, then before the plan can be implemented, the governor must identify where the funding sources are going to come from and come back to the body and report that, so we understand where the money is coming from. We also require that an appeals process be adopted, so any employees who are left out or feel like they're being treated unfairly can have a due process to be able to file their grievances and try and pursue fair pay. We did all of that in Bill 268, and what we did not do was tell the governor how to implement it. We didn't say you have to do it this way, or you have to do it that way. We said, here's how much you have available. If it's going to require more money, you need to identify where that money is going to come from, and if requiring more money is going to delay the implementation, then the implementation shall be effective retroactively, so that employees wouldn't be getting left out, but also making sure the money was going to be there. When we brought Bill 268 to the floor, certain senators got up and spoke in favor of this bill, certain senators voted against it, and the rationale that was discussed over the course of Bill 268 and that was reiterated in the governor's veto message was very confusing. First of all, the confusion began when we couldn't get the actual information from the Department of Administration to really understand how exactly the governor was going to roll this out. The confusion was further compounded on the second informational briefing, when we asked questions, how does it break down by agency? We couldn't get an answer. How is this going to affect individual employees? Where are they going to get slotted? How are you going to determine who's going to get what? Couldn't be provided with an answer. Over the course of the passage of Bill 268, there was a lot of things that took place, you know? There was a video of hard-working employees putting in very long hours compiling purportedly 15 boxes of 30,000 pages of paper. That was supposed to have been dropped on us as a reward for us asking for more information, as a reward for us trying to be responsible about this. But to date, even to this very point, even within the governor's veto message itself, we still have not received that information. Bill 268 was a very carefully crafted bill to make sure that we're going to be implementing something that is affordable and is fair, and if in the event that the governor could not find the funds to fully and fairly implement it, he needed to come back, he needs to come back and communicate that to this body. Money does not grow on trees. We do recognize that our classified and unclassified employees deserve to have their pay more fair and equitable, but we need to also make sure that we know where the money is coming from. All of these questions we asked, very reasonable questions, and the responses that we got, not only directly, but in communications to the media and in misdirections that were, that were discussed on, on talk radio and live conversations, it was all, it was all just a lot of confusion, and in the end, Madam Speaker, in the end, what we have here is something that clearly looks like it was a delay from the onset, an intent to confuse throughout the process, an intent to abuse with the dumping of 30,000 pages of paper, and all to lead it up to this day. We passed Bill 268, and even the veto itself didn't come until the last hour of the day before the governor wanted to implement his own plan. If we were truly operating in good faith for the best interests of our people, we should have been provided with the information. We should not have been threatened and abused with that kind of, that kind of treatment. That's not how, that's not how leaders work together for the interests of their people. And we should not have had this veto message come at the last hour just so that you can drop it, say you did it, and then move forward with what you want to do. That's not how we serve the people. That's not how we should be serving them. In the governor's veto message, there's more misinformation. He talks about how the plan is going to cost $15 million in Bill 268, and yet he hasn't provided any justification as to where that $15 million figure comes from. An elaborate video was made saying his plan would have cost 20, our plan costs 15, now this is going to cost 7. Numbers are being thrown around all over the place, Madam Speaker, with no clear understanding as to where exactly those numbers are coming from. Bill 268 would have actually required those numbers to be provided, reported to this body, identify the funding, and be open to our people so that we know where the money is going to come from. Our people are very reasonable people. They all understand that, yes, pay adjustments are important, but surely we don't want to be adjusting pay and then a year from now having pay cuts and furloughs and payless paydays because we didn't ask the necessary questions, and in asking those questions, the response that we got was a combination of no response or an abusive response, and that's very sad. It's very unfortunate. Also, in the governor's veto message, he says that senatorial pay raises remain hidden as if we're trying to hide us getting more money somehow, when the reality, Madam Speaker, is in Bill 268, we say no to raises for all elected officials, for directors, for deputy directors, and a lower raise for mayors, a very responsible and reasonable proposal. The governor goes on to say in his veto message that we are interfering with executive functions, that we are interfering with his organic duties to administer and manage the executive branch, but it is our fundamental responsibility to look out for the people's money and to make sure that when we are spending it, that we're not going to be putting ourselves back to where we were, back to those days where we were taking tax refund money and using it to run the operations of the government, and unfortunately, those days are already upon us. The governor has raided the tax refund trust account on two occasions already, to the point where we needed to introduce a resolution for declaratory judgment from the courts to try and get that practice stopped. We have already crossed into that slippery slope, and all we are asking in Bill 268 is, yes, we support pay adjustments for classified and unclassified employees. No, we don't want to spend the people's money on raises of tens and twenties of thousands of dollars for elected officials and directors and deputy directors. Yes, a nominal increase for mayors, something reasonable, something that our people can accept when we have to answer to them. That's what we are asking for in Bill 268. The governor goes on to say, very, very upfront, very, very upfront, he's not going to take his raise now, but he's going to take it after the election, and his justification is, I'm putting it out there, if the people vote for me again, then that means that they want me to have it. All of these things are getting convoluted and mixed up in the messaging, and then the messaging is getting further convoluted with it going out to our people and saying, oh, the senators don't want to give you this, and the senators don't want to give you that, and that's absolutely untrue. If we aren't going to be operating under the fundamental basis of what true, what is true and what is not, then, Madam Speaker, how are we operating this government? How is the executive branch electing to lead? This is not an environment where we should be trying to see who can confuse the people the most in order to get what it is they want, or who can delay and use the system in order to get what you want. That's not what any of us should be here for, that's not what the governor should be doing, but that is what is happening, Madam Speaker. That is what is happening, not just in this instance, but in other instances in the short time that I have been here, and it is very frightening. So, Madam Speaker, I'm moving Bill 268-32 for consideration in the voting file so that we can do what is responsible. We can say we have 7 million set aside. That's what we set aside already in the budget. If it's going to require more funding because you haven't provided any information to us, you have the authorization to identify that funding and let us know, and we can move this thing forward fairly for all of our people, but in a way that's not going to be giving extremely large raises to any elected officials, directors, deputy directors, or mayors. How can we, as a, as a legislative body, and how can our governor reject something like that and, and make the whole basis for that rejection just a lot of confusion? How can you take pride in leadership of your people by confusion, leadership by misdirection, leadership by manipulation? Surely, we must be better than that. And what worries me, Madam Speaker, is the implications of all of this. If the governor said it was going to cost 20 million and trust us in the beginning and now is saying, oh, I can't even afford 15 million, and that's what you guys are doing, and I'm only going to spend 7, what, what can we and can't we afford? And if we truly cannot afford implementing this fairly, but you're moving forward on it anyway, what are the implications for the future? You know, when you implement this pay and you pay 50% to this person and 100% to that person, it doesn't mean that you, you don't have to owe them back pay. You've already committed to that salary scale. You're going to have to find the money for that, but now the governor's pushing it forward without even bothering to identify the funding source. And what frightens me further down the road, Madam Speaker, is that we do have existing obligations right now throughout our government that demand our attention and need resources. You know, I remember an election not too long ago, a whole thing about bucks for buses, and in the front page of the paper, we have a bus problem. Surely, we should override Bill 268 so that we can take that money and perhaps solve that bus problem? Sanctuary needs money, surely we can work towards solving that problem? Our crime rate... Our crime rate is in dire need of our attention, surely we can work towards solving that problem as well? But we put all those things aside. The governor put all these things aside when he vetoed Bill 268. And what is going to happen in the future, Madam Speaker? What is going to happen in the future if come December, come January, the hospital, who already said they are a growing concern, and they don't even know how they're going to afford this, what is going to happen when the hospital runs out of money? The new hospital is opening its doors in September, which means that the impact of that new hospital isn't going to be factored into our budget in October unless the hospital, unless GMH actually gets us a really solid projection of what we can consider. But that's not a part of the governor's budget that he gave to us. He didn't factor in the impact of the new hospital on the GMH. So when that new hospital opens in September, and the financial realities of GMH come crashing down on our doorstep here at this legislature in December, in January, in February, what are we going to do? Where are we going to get that money? How are we going to pay for that, and who are we going to furlough or lay off? Those are all realities, our realities, realities that we simply wanted answers for in Bill 268. And when the hospital goes broke in December, January, February, what's going to be the next crisis response? We've already seen the charter school being used as a crisis hostage to go and push forward a deal for Cortex that all of us step back and said, what's going on with that? So when that new crisis comes up, what's going to be the new crisis response there? Are we going to go sell the port to go save the hospital? Are we going to go sell GPA to go save the hospital? Are we going to sell the people's assets in order to prevent payless paydays and furloughs? Are we going to be pushed into that corner and left with only those choices? And one would sit back and ask, why on earth would any leader even want to take us down that road? Why would you want to push the people of Guam into that corner? You really wouldn't if you're operating strictly from the position of serving the people. But if you wanted to be able to get in on the selling of those assets, if you wanted to be the buyer of those assets, then surely creating the crisis is in your interest. We can see it coming, Madam Speaker. We can see it coming miles away. And all we are asking in Bill 268 is, yes, we all acknowledge that those pay adjustments are necessary for our classified and unclassified employees. Here's the money that we already set aside for that. If it's going to take more, identify the funding sources. We're going to work together on that. And let's do this responsibly. I dread the day, Madam Speaker, I really dread the day, when we're going to be looking at those kind of situations, when you can draw the dot, connect the dots already, you can start connecting the dots already. And to sweep our people up in the passions of Valentine's Day promises, all so that you can set our island on that course, we need to be better than that, Madam Speaker. And this House, this legislature, can do that. There are fifteen senators in here who can not only pass bills but override vetoes, who can not only stand up and make statements but actually go out there and fight for what is right for our people. We can all do that. And I'm confident, I always try and believe, that we will. So, Madam Speaker, I humbly ask that my colleagues join me in passing Bill 268 and overriding the veto of the governor, doing what is responsible and necessary, and not only stepping back and looking at this with open eyes as it relates to the pay of our classified and unclassified employees, but with all other things going forward, eyes wide open with respect to our hospital, with respect to sanctuary, with respect to our school buses, with respect to the ninety million dollars that our schools need for upgrades, with respect to Simon Sanchez, with respect to fixing our people's roads, and on down the list, because we all know that list. We can do it, Madam Speaker. Let that day start today. Thank you.
Notwithstanding the governor's objections on the veto of Bill 268, if there are anybody else who would like to speak, Mr. Vice Speaker?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise today to ask my colleagues for their vote to override this because we have at stake the independence and the integrity of this branch of government. That's what is at stake today, Madam Speaker. When the administration came in and in January, put a halt by executive order to the Hay Plan that was implemented a couple of months before that in 2010, Standard and Poor's extolled and the virtues of that action, thought it was a very, very, very financially sound In 2011 and in 2012, Standard and Poor's complimented the administration for that very responsible Then this last year, Madam Speaker, we tried to figure out how this Hay Plan got to us. And I really need to remind our colleagues where this came from. And I compliment the governor for following part of the law that directs him to have submitted this plan. And I'd like to read that, because a couple of times over the last week, he has pointed out that I should read the law. And so I'd like to read the law publicly so that I ask my colleagues, so they can understand it. In Public Law 32-68, the budget bill that was passed, there's a section, and it reads as follows. "The final implementable plan to adjust compensation, classifications, and benefits shall be submitted by Imagat Lahy, Imagat Lahy in Guam to the Speaker of Ilheh Saturah in Guam no later than January 15, 2014." In compliance with that, the governor followed the law. He submitted what he considered to be an implementable plan pursuant to this statute that we passed and he signed. Madam Speaker, I think we need to read on. The next sentence reads, "The implementation of salary increases from said plan shall be effective thirty calendar days after receipt of the plan by the Speaker of Ilheh Saturah." I'm stopping there because I, when the governor submitted the plan to us on January the 15th, that's when he first announced that by Valentine's Day today, thirty days hence from January 15th, the plan would go into effect. But I think it's imperative that we, as legislators, read the full sentence, and I'll start it all over again. "The implementation of the salary increase due from said plan shall be effective thirty calendar days after receipt of the plan by the Speaker of Ilheh Saturah." And please, my colleagues, I ask you to look at it very carefully because the following words are very important. Unless, unless, unless disapproved or amended. We could have, as a legislature, done one or two things. By resolution, we could have disapproved the plan as submitted. But that's not what we wanted. We believed that the classified employees, after twenty-one years, were deserving of an increase in their base pay. We believed that. We also believed, or at least some of us did, that the elected officials and the political appointees could not and should not be receiving any additional pay increase with the financial condition as it currently stands. So this legislature did the responsible thing and passed Bill 268, which amended, as what in the law says, unless disapproved or amended. That is what we did. We amended the plan that was sent to us. In furtherance of the authority that provided, was provided to him to send that to us, the section continues. "The legislature may approve, disapprove, or amend the plan prior to the effective And it goes on, but I just wanted to highlight that. "The legislature may approve, disapprove, or amend the plan prior to the effective date." And that is what 268 was doing, it was amending it. And the section finishes off and concludes with the following. "To ensure it is implemented fairly and consistent with appropriated amounts." That is why, Madam Speaker, in 268, we asked for the amounts that were going to each one of the departments. We wanted to see whether or not the 7.07 was sufficient. That is why we said, if it's not going, if we can't do it with the 707, then he has to come back to us and ask us for more money, but that we were not going to leave the employees without an increase because it was going to be retroactive back to February the 9th. That's all we were doing in 268, trying to make sure that we had the sufficient information, that it was going to be implemented fairly, that we weren't going to have another situation like we had about twenty years ago when the nurses got a pay increase and the hospital nurses got increases, but the public health nurses didn't get increases, and so there was a lawsuit. In that case, Madam Speaker, God rest her soul, Rosalie of Paris, was the one that brought that lawsuit, and in that lawsuit, Judge Janet Healy Weeks held that equal protection required that everybody have equal, be treated equally. In this plan that was sent to us, Madam Speaker, the educators, the attorneys, the nurses, we're going to get one hundred percent of the Hay Plan implementation addressed to them. We'd already taken care of law enforcement. But the rest of the general plan, the executive, we'd already taken care of the law enforcement But the rest of the general pay plan for the rest of the employees was going to be implemented fifty percent. That isn't fair to the employees. I understand that one employee got a check today for six cents. So, Madam Speaker, I ask my colleagues, I know, I'm not going to get into any of the other political stuff, just read the section that authorizes and directs the governor to send the plan to us and what we, as a body, are supposed to do. We are abdicating our responsibilities by not voting to override this veto, which completely disregards the amendment we made with the belief that he can implement whatever he sent to begin with. That's not what the section says. It doesn't say you submit the plan and thirty days later you can implement it regardless of what the legislature says. It says it is, can be implemented thirty days from submission to the speaker unless, unless disapproved or amended. So the only authorization he had was the amended version that we sent to him. And if he did as he did yesterday by vetoing it, he has nothing that he could have done, that he could have, that would have authorized him to implement any kind of Hay Plan. He vetoed the authority we gave him. So I ask my colleagues to stand for the integrity and the independence of this branch. We started the discussion today with, in a democracy, it's important to have freedom of speech. But, Madam Speaker, the democracy of the United States and our little island is built on the integrity and independence of three separate branches. The executive, the legislative, and the judiciary. And the legislative has only really two functions, the budget and the confirmation of appointees. All the rest of it is really just what we want to do. But that's the only two things that it must do every year. And we amended the plan that he sent to us, and consequently, we have, he has no authority to do anything, and his compliance with our instruction in 32-68 to send it to us by January 15th has him acknowledged that he has to submit it to us by January 15th, which he complied with. And he understood that he had thirty days, that thirty days from that it could be implemented, but he completely decided he was going to disregard unless disapproved or amended. We didn't disapprove it, we amended it. And the last line of the section, that the legislature may approve, disapprove, or amend the plan to the effective date to ensure the implementation fairly and consistent with appropriated amounts, all legislative authority. And, Madam Speaker, I appeal to my colleagues, even on the other side, fortunately or unfortunately, the majority shifts from side to side. Six years ago, we were not in charge. For ten years, the Republicans were the majority in here. And they might, during their lifetime, especially as young as some of them are, they'll be serving in a majority that has a Republican majority. But if they allow the governor to trample over the independence of this body, it'll be an impotent and ineffective legislature. So I ask my colleagues to join me to re-establish our independence and our integrity by reminding the governor, we amended that plan. And his only authority is to implement the plan that we amended. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Mr. Vice Speaker. On the motion, notwithstanding the governor's objections to veto Bill 268, are there any others who would like to speak? So on the motion then, I'm sorry, Speaker Van Leeuwen, on the motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I just want to rise, of course, in support of the motion to try and frame all of the noise and the din that has accompanied this debate with the truth, the whole truth, both sides. Madam Speaker, the issue of the increase of the pay plan, I think, first of all, we've got to make a clear distinction that what we are doing is we're assigning a value to the jobs within the government of Guam and how the people that are occupying those jobs. the jobs within the government of Guam and how the people that are occupying those jobs will be paid and how they will progress. That is the general objective of doing the Hay Study. When we first established, for example, an accountant-one position back in 1991, it paid this much. So somebody entering the government service at an accountant-one would be paid $5 an hour. Without any adjustment to that pay scale, an accountant entering government service in the year 2011 would still be paid $5 an hour because that's the pay plan and the pay scale that is adopted by statute. Now, the accountant that started in 1991 at $5 an hour continued to get a pay raise. So the individual himself, because that pay plan allowed you to increase your salary through satisfactory ratings, outstanding ratings, and so forth. So you were doing evaluation every one year for your first five years, 18 months after five, and 24 months after 10. So you still receive increases to your base pay of $5 an hour. But anybody that comes in, it still starts at five. Now, what occurred was, of course, we saw that we couldn't be hiring accountants at $5 an hour in the year 2000, 1993 and 1990, I think the last pay plan, the original one, was in the late 90s. And so we made a move to evaluate what is an accountant-one being paid in the market in, let's say, 2010. And we decided in the analysis that that job, accountant-one, step-one, initial employment, should be paid not the $5 that has been set and statute all these years or the pay plan, but the really, if you go and look in the private sector or in the marketplace within the, across the U.S., an accountant-one, step-one, is now making $11 an hour. And so we now pegged that $11 an hour. Now, what has occurred is, of course, when we adopted these pay plans, that's what we did. There was a pay, a first adoption of the original Pay, Hay Plan, and then this is the second evaluation of the pay plan because it was several, it's been almost a decade since the first review of that process, maybe even 20 years if I recall correctly, since we reviewed it. So now we had to evaluate these jobs again. So that's what we're doing here, is assigning a value to the job, the job and the job duties of these people, of these new, of these positions. And anybody coming in would be slotted at that position new. So that's why you see a lot of concern by the employees in terms of somebody who got hired, let's say in 2000, today, let's say, for example, with this new pay scale that's been implemented, that an accountant-one, let's say, is now pegged at $15 an hour. So the person that comes in today after this pay plan tomorrow gets hired will start at $15 an hour, step-one. Now, the person who got hired a year ago is going to be making the same amount of, is going to be making, for example, back, what it was back then, which is $10 an hour. So there was inequity built in terms of how do you implement it? How do you do it so that the new person is making 15, but the person that's been in the position for five years is only making 11 or 12 because their review process only allowed them a 2% increase in their first year? So the guy starting tomorrow makes 15, but the guy in there for the last five years, because he only got a 2% increase every year for that, is only making $11 and, $12 rather because it's a dollar increase. It's 10% over the, over the 10 years, over the five years, 2% every year. So he's only making 12, but the person next to him, who just started yesterday, is making 15. And so these kind of issues are what the issues of the employees wanted to know. How do we handle this? How is it fair that somebody that starts, you know, tomorrow is going to make 15, and I've been here for five years and I'm making 11? And so these are the questions that occurred during the 2010 process. And these were the issues that needed to be reviewed, and these are called compression issues and so forth. It's a very technical thing, and I agree with the Department of Administration. It is technical. But we took a lot of time in the Office of Finance and Budget, Committee on Appropriations, to look at this thing and try to understand it and try to resolve some of these issues with the advice of the Hay Consultants to resolve these issues for the employees. And when we started implementing them, these issues arose. And when the governor announces Hay Plan after canceling the 2010, but let me digress a little bit on the 2010. The governor says he canceled the 2010 because we didn't have the money and that we would save money by canceling the 2010 in 2011 when he first got in. But that, nothing could be further from the truth. Because what the governor wanted to do, and what he actually did, was he canceled the pay raises for the employees and took the money that was earmarked for the pay raises of the employees and paid the increase in costs for the health insurance program. So the choice was made, are we going to pay our employees, which we already started paying, the increase in their salaries, or are we going to pay health insurance? And the governor, of course, with his background and his familial interests and ties to these businesses, decided that the employees were going to wait and we're going to make sure we had enough money to pay health insurance. So that's the first reason why the governor, and the only reason why, it was in the, all the bills that were passed by this legislative body, that the savings from the Hay Plan was going to be used to pay for the increase in health insurance costs. So that was the choice that was made. And so what we wanted to do in this process was resolve some of these issues that remained open after the cancellation of the 2010 increases. So that's why we asked for the information. We wanted to be sure that it was fair and equitable when it was implemented, that the issues that the employees had brought up were going to be explained to them once again, that they would have an avenue and a process for airing these concerns, for resolving their concerns, for petitioning the administration for a review process, and for handling the grievances that may occur when they feel that they're not treated fairly and equitably in the adoption of the Hay Plan. That's really all we asked. We even had the 2010 policies and procedures which addressed some of these issues and said, is this the workable plan? Can we use this? And they said, well, we may have to modify that. Can we use this as a basis, as a template, as a foundation for resolving some of these concerns? And could we adopt this as part of the adoption and implementable plan? And they said, no, we're not going to do that. Trust us, we're going to handle it after we issue these payments, after we adopt the pay plan, after we slot the employees, you know? And so we didn't think it was fair, and that's why the legislature, in amending the governor's plan as submitted, put these things in place as, you need to do this before you begin implementing the plan. Not, don't implement the plan, these things have to be resolved. I, as a legislature in here, am not personally affected by this, any of the pay increases, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I voted against the bill on the floor here that raised the senator's salaries. I voted against that. So my record is, I'm pretty comfortable with where I stand on the issue of senatorial pay raises, and I won't talk anymore on that issue because I voted against them. I've never voted for a senatorial pay increase. And so, Madam Speaker, but what we wanted to do was ensure that the employees got taken care of first. And that's why, as another change and amendment that this body wanted to do was, if we are going to take care of our employees, then let's take care of them, and let's take care of them fully before we start taking care of ourselves. That's why you have senators in the body that says, I'm not going to take my pay raise. I don't approve a pay raise. Well, for me, that's right. I'm not going to take my pay raise. I don't approve a senatorial pay raise. But I'm also going to make sure that we take care of the employees first, that before we approve pay raises for the directors and the political appointees, remember, all these directors volunteered to serve in these positions, you know? I mean, some of them are doing well, some of them are able to, to, because of the accommodation that this body has made to Governor Calvo, where we allowed him to expand double dipping within his cabinet and within his directorships, that we didn't allow any other governors before. So these directors, many of them are able to take two salaries. They're able to take their pension, and they're able to take the salary of what the position pays. And in some instances, you know, that equates to over $100,000 a year. And so rather than giving these directors a pay raise at this time, we wanted, at least I wanted, in amending the plan, to put a program in place that takes care of fully funding the general pay plan, which are the accountants, the guys who process the checks, the guys who are going to process all these new increases in salaries, who haven't gotten an increase from their job function in 25 years. And let's take care of those guys. Why are we going to give half of the increase to these guys, but give 100% increase to the governor, the lieutenant governor, the, you know, the attorney general, the public auditor? We can wait. I mean, they're making $100,000. They can wait until the guy making, you know, $25,000 gets his $40 a month increase in pay. Because that's what it translates. People are thinking that it's hundreds of thousands. You know, Madam Speaker, we got a lot of calls from our office today because of our position of questioning the governor and wanting the detail behind the plan, how it was going to affect the employees. And so we got a lot of phone calls today from employees who got this paycheck today, this Happy Valentine's Pay Plan increase. And some of those checks, Madam Speaker, are $6. So this government, this entire government, first of all, the administration and the governor, you know, did what you call in Chamorro, Madam Speaker, you know, when we asked for information, we only asked, how much is it going to cost to implement fully the nurses, the executive, the attorney, the educator? What's the cost of fully implementing that as submitted by the governor? I doubt that the governor just decided, woke up one morning and say, hey, I'm going to implement these four pay plans 100%, and I'm going to have the rest of the government of Guam wait, and I'm only going to give them 50%. And he's going to say, and I don't know what it costs, but that's how I want to do it. What we're saying, that's just not the sensible way to approach this thing. And so all we asked was those details. We didn't ask for the human resource record. We didn't ask for the results of all the GG ones that were processed. Just said, what's the cost of those things to implement it so that we know? Do we have enough money? Do we need more money? And so forth. No, ah, he, Madam Speaker, they wanted to appear as if they were so open that they gave us 30,000 pages, and they wasted all of the human resource time of these government professionals to make copies for this that nobody asked for. But it's only to appear that they're cooperating. But, Madam Speaker, and for those of us in Chamorro that understand, you know, Chamorro and understand the, these kind of cultural sensitivities to our values, and, so I think that's what the governor wanted to do. That's exactly what he did. And he gave us all of that information, which was totally useless because nobody asked for it, nobody wanted it. And it didn't, it didn't, it didn't, it's not going to influence my decision to look at those 30,000 pages because that's not the information that is needed to determine whether the plan is implementable or not. It is those very simple that should have been done and was done. It was done. Because if you talk to the professional staff at the Department of Administration, they'll tell you, they know what those numbers are. They did the calculations. They know how employees are going to be slotted, but they just refused to release that information, which was essential to the legislature, Madam Speaker. And so all we're trying to do is respond to the concerns of the employees and that there would never be a time when the employees would not receive what they are owed. But the governor's saying, if you implement this, you won't be. And the governor's saying that if you implement this, then you're going to run out of money. Well, how is it that when he gave us the number, he wasn't going to run out of money? But when the number, when he's implementing the plan, if he did what we didn't restrict him from doing, he said we would run out of money? Again, it's that trying to appear to be cooperative, but absolutely being, you know, recalcitrant in terms of providing the information. Madam Speaker, what we're trying to do is provide checks and balance. And, you know, we talk about the fundamentals of democracy and so forth. Checks and balance, of course, is another inherent fundamental requirement for a democracy to work. One branch can't have its way all the time, but the governor wants it his way all the time. It's like being spoiled, you know? And maybe some of us have been spoiled all our lives, and we have a sense of entitlement, whether it's within our own family, our own businesses, and now that we're in government, that we are entitled in the government to do whatever the hell we want. And you can't be because it's not democratic, and that's not the way we function as a community and as a government, that there has to be checks and balances, and there has to be responses to the concerns of the other branches. The judiciary's concerned about the implementation of the Hay Plan as it infringes on their power as a third independent branch of government who has been granted the authority to manage their own internal pay structure. Yet the governor put in the pay structure within the pay plan, and now is providing some ambiguity on whether or not the judiciary has that independence. So again, it's like his way and nobody else's way. But all we're trying to do is provide it for what's the best way for the employees who are going to be affected, whose lives are going to be affected. Madam Speaker, they spent enormous amount of money, because time is money, and human capital resources to process these checks, to issue out $5 and $7 checks. Madam Speaker, if you recall, a couple of weeks earlier this fiscal year, when we had the rebates for the health insurance, remember, when the rebate, by the way, I digress a little bit again, but remember, 2782, Section 2782, I believe, is the proper fund for the health insurance rebate from the overpayments? The governor estimated $3.5 million or something like that in his budget, very, very confident that that was going to be, come in, and that that money was then appropriated to fund health insurance benefits for the retirees. You know how much they collected on that estimate by the governor that was certified of the, I think it was 2.5 or 2.5 or 3.5? It was like half a million dollars was collected. Half a million dollars was collected from that estimate by the governor, that 2.0, that $3 million or whatever, I recall, 3.5 was going to be collected. And we only collected half a million. And the governor, Madam Speaker, paid, that it took the 2.75 or the 3 million, the shortfall of now 2 million, 2.5 million, but he made sure that we paid the health insurance benefits to the retirees. Because where do those health insurance benefit payments go? Well, we all know where they go. To the provider of health insurance for the government employees. Calvo Select. Even though we did not collect that money, he made sure that he used his transfer authority to make those payments. You go to the other side and you look at the Department of Education, and he said, he estimated that we would collect 30 million for the Territorial Educational Facilities Fund. And we were short in the collection. That was the governor's estimate. Once again, no matter what he says, the truth is, that was the governor's estimate attested to by Mr. Rius and so forth. And we were short 9 million. And what did the governor do? Did he make up? Did he make up the nine million from other sources, even though we had a surplus, and pay and give the money to the Department of Education, which is now struggling because they don't have that nine million? No, he's saying, we didn't collect it, so I can't pay it. But we didn't collect the health insurance rebate of two million dollars, but he made sure we paid the health insurance premiums for those retirees. But I digress. So I go back, Madam Speaker, you know, back to the fact that the half a million dollars should have gone to the employees. And when they calculated it, the Department of Administration said, wait a minute, half a million dollars to distribute to all these GovGuam employees? The average check would be like five dollars and forty-three cents. It's going to cost us more money to issue those checks for five dollars and forty-three cents to give back that overpayment. So we're just going to keep the money. And we'll just reduce their health insurance premium. But no, but on Valentine's Day, today, we can issue six-dollar checks. Why isn't it saying, wait a minute, let's just not issue those six-dollar checks? Let's put them in the next paycheck? But no, because again, why are we doing this? You have to ask the governor for his motivations in issuing. Maybe he, maybe, maybe he is correct. Maybe he didn't know how much it was going to be and how much each employee got. Maybe he thought each of the employees were going to get five hundred dollars and they're going to go have a great dinner tonight. But if you're banking on taking your haypan paycheck and taking your sweetheart out to dinner tonight, you're going to be washing dishes at the end if that's all the money you brought. Because you can't. So Madam Speaker, all we're trying to do with regards to the override of this is stop the pay increases for the elected officials and the political appointees, move forward with the implementation of the pay for the classified and unclassifieds and, and the other pay plans, Madam Speaker. But just ensure that we take care of those individuals first, before we take care of ourselves first. And before we take care of the political appointees first. I think we can wait. I think that it'll make sense to us. And again, all of the other side issues that's brought to by my colleagues with regards to the issue of the integrity of the branches and the powers are all very, very real and grave issues that I think need to be addressed in this override. And so I ask for the consideration of the body to once again ensure that we move forward with the pay increases. Nobody gets left behind. But the employees have a process in place for them to be able to see that when it affects their lives negatively, that they have a way to appeal and petition this government for redress. Thank you, and Sidus Massey.
Welcome, Senator. On the motion, Senator Duenas.
Sidus Massey, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to rise and speak on the motion of veto bill two sixty-eight. Happy Valentine's, Madam Speaker, and to the rest of the body. Once again, I find myself with all the digression that was spoken about by my former colleague. To actually just have to make this statement, I will allow those statements to go challenged by those who were accused, I guess. So I'll just go through what I think are salient points about what was brought up by my other colleagues and the same colleague, the retiring speaker. Oh, bucks for buses. My colleague from Talafofu, in a chastising way, says to the body, of course, I know that's directed at me. All the time knowing, Madam Speaker, because I know, because he talked about it on talk shows and interviews and the like, bucks for buses. Always knowing that that measure was never going to see the light of day. This same colleague of mine has oversight, oversight over those bucks for buses, Madam Speaker. I don't know whether my good colleague even bothered to pick up the phone and call DPW and find out from the director that there is two million dollars in an RFP, which would equate to probably about twenty-five buses to be issued? And the assurance from the director that at least by the time the next school year starts, those buses should be operational? I'm not defending, Madam Speaker, because yes, I was the bucks for buses guy. And I was on the record again today saying that if I got this pay raise, I would take that twenty-five thousand and give bucks for buses. Madam Speaker, my colleague talks about the raises. I don't know whether it's amnesia, but my same colleague says, I was told, go down there and fight for your pay. In fact, I'll do such a good job, they'll probably want to give me a raise. But then shrouds, shrouds the intent of bill two sixty-eight and takes to task one of my other colleagues on my side of the aisle, the veracity of his statements with regard to a true raise embedded in bill two sixty-eight. Also, the same colleague to make an amendment on this floor to kill my other colleagues on my side of the aisle's bill, and he withdrew it with honor. Clear intent, I guess. My same colleague sat here with us, Madam Speaker, while we went over seven iterations of the budget in this last go-around for the budget of twenty-fourteen. The same colleague made the comment on the floor. Look what happens when nine million dollars appears. And then there was nine, and then there was fifteen. And then we wanted to give tax refunds, but no, none of those bills, again, were heard on this floor. There's still bills in the committee that were never heard on this floor. We all voted on that budget. We'll agree, we'll make some agreements now. We'll give the chief executive fifteen percent transfer authority. Because the squabble behind closed doors while we went out of session, in fact, we had to come back because I think the public was clamoring for us to sit down here and talk so they could hear us on what we would do with those additional monies. We all passed that budget. We all passed that budget, knowing that we agreed that seven million dollars would be available to implement what we probably and should have known would be a partial implementation of the hay plan at the time. But now we're surprised. So I hear that the responsible thing to do is to enact or override this bill, which clearly, clearly is an appropriation, an authorization without an appropriation. Any way you look at it. My good colleague, who I have the greatest deal of respect for, being a chief justice. And it almost pains me just to make a couple of comments to his comments. That the executive acted with regard to the override. And I am definitely not going to go down the road of trying to practice law or even questioning that. What I will say is, if that is the interpretation and that is the feeling and sentiment of my good, highly esteemed, respectful, and who I have so much respect for, chief justice, then this would be an equal travesty to pass this bill for the same reason that I just said earlier. There has been no conclusion whatsoever that the implications of this bill is an authorization without an appropriation. An empty promise. That, to me, Madam Speaker, I'm sorry, but it would be irresponsible. And if the chief executive, as my good colleague believes, has acted outside of his legal authority, then as we, I guess, passed a resolution by nine members at least of this body several Saturdays ago, we know where to go to challenge that issue. Our very honorable third branch of government. My good colleague, the budget chairman. Sure, with all his years of experience, I wouldn't even attempt to question his very eloquent dialogue of the increments of the pay and having passed budget after budget and voted on budget after budget in this body, I won't even go there. What I will say, Madam Speaker, is, where I feel as though that eloquent rendition, otherwise, is a micromanagement of what these HR professionals came down here and tried to explain that they went through the process, working with the hate, to get and arrive at this particular conclusion. They said over and over and over again, the appeals process is there to deal with each and every dispute brought forward by a six cents, a six dollars, a six-point-two cents dollars, whatever it is. They're happy as HR managers and duly recognized classified employees of this government to address that, Madam Speaker, the appeals process. Madam Speaker, with the thousands of documents that were brought to this body, which were sent back, it is obvious, and I think it would be obvious to any average person, even in the thirty days, we were never going to go through all of that. We were never going to solve every problem or even a significant amount of problems that we thought we could as intervening and micromanaging the HR process that a reputable hay group put forward in conjunction with our very determined professionals at Department of Administration. Madam Speaker, we're a full-time body. If that really is our quest, we received the budget submission not more than a few days ago. We work on Saturdays. We're here in the night on Valentine's and I'm glad to be here. I love my job. So let's go to work tomorrow, Madam Speaker. Let's call administration down and work with this plan that's been implemented. And let's go agency by agency and not stop until we fix every problem because we have that authority. We're in the budget season. We could all stay here for the next three to four months and go job by job if we wanted to. Let's fix it. Let's roll up our sleeves and get to work. Because that's what we want to do. We knew there was no way that's going to happen in thirty days. Six cents, six dollars, problem after problem. I agree, Madam Speaker. I want to get to work. I want to solve those problems. I want to work with DOA. But to say and to ignore, regardless of where it came from, whether we like it or not, the comments and the work that was put into a veto message that was sent to us, that I've heard a couple of times on the floor saying, I'm not going to talk about the politics. I'm just going to cut to the chase here. But to say that an override of this bill after I have challenged at least five to six positions that were placed on this floor, Madam Speaker, but at the end of the day, it will only be that one thing. That one thing, the so-called responsibility. When we pass the budget, we all pass that budget. That budget passed unanimously in this body. And while we're doing all this HR research and taking care of all those problems, Madam Speaker, we can sit down with those agencies too and say, are you operating within your budget? Are you operating with what was given to you? Because last I've seen, I understand, the allotments are going out as per the schedule. And I join all of my colleagues in saying, you're doggone right. Fix the roads, fix the buses, give the hospital what they need. Do everything you have to do, public safety, officers, corrections, everything, sure. That's why we passed the budget. And if that budget wasn't adequate, then come back and say, this is what I need. And let all of us then collectively say, you know what? We made a mistake. We passed that seven million dollars. None of us in this body should have passed that seven million dollars, Madam Speaker. We're all guilty if we believe that these agencies are not and cannot operate within the budget that was passed by this body. So as I close, Madam Speaker, that's exactly why. I'm not going to add insult to injury and say, just because I believe this override, it only takes away the pay raise of the governor and lieutenant governor, only reduces the mayors down to a reasonable percentage, only tells the senators, and I'm glad my colleague introduced another bill, we'll see where that goes, only reduces the pay of the senators, just as this, 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 and this, and this. Everything else is full bore. But ignores the point, ignores the point that clearly we would be operating outside of what we passed in the budget and its appropriation level. Sidus Massey, Madam Speaker.
Welcome, Senator. On the motion, Senator Snickerster close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Every day, every day when I come into work, Madam Speaker, I pray. Because there's just so many variables to this job that, that, that make it very challenging. But most of all, Madam Speaker, I pray because this is not just something to come in and, and, and it's not just work to do. It's the lives of our people that we're dealing with. And whatever truth we speak or spin we speak is going to affect the lives of our people. And I always try and seek in my heart that I'm going to speak truth. And when I ran for office, I, I, I wanted to make sure, you know, there were times where people close to me would say, oh, maybe you shouldn't say this or maybe you shouldn't say that. And I always said, no. I'm always going to say what I feel. And I'm always going to speak the truth as it comes to my heart. Because that is the only thing that's going to either put me in office or get me out. And I don't want to serve the people in any other way. And that's what it means, Madam Speaker, to earn your pay and to fight for your pay. Because the job that we have to do here is something that we need to be honest about from the depths of our soul. And from day one, even on And from day one, even on the campaign trail, I said, "I want to work so hard that the people want to give me a raise." And even in saying that, and even if the Governor's trying to throw one at me, I'm saying, "No. No. Because our people need that money elsewhere." I bring up bucks for buses because that raise that the Governor's trying to throw at me, that everybody who's going to vote no on this veto override is basically saying, opening the door for, that could go there. The raise that the Governor wants to give himself, but he's putting off until after the election, that can go there too. And that's part of fighting for the people and earning your pay and earning their trust every single day. You know what the easy thing to do is, Madam Speaker? The easy thing is to do nothing. Just to make a lot of noise and do nothing. And in this whole pay issue, we have seen that too. That is the easy thing to do. Someone, the retiring Speaker, said, "Come down here, we'll sit down for months, we'll talk about all these things." What have you done? What have you introduced to address this issue? We want to make sure the money's going to be there for this, Madam Speaker. We want to make sure the funding's going to be there for this. The claim that this is an authorization without appropriation and is an empty promise is absolutely incorrect. We very clearly state it here in this bill. "The act shall be effective on or retroactively to February 9, 2014, provided, provided that Imagallahi submits to Las Alturas Guahan the details of the plan, provided that the policies and procedures of specific details of slotting of employees is afforded to this body, provided that the cost of the implementation of the plan is broken down by agency or instrumentality, provided that the identified sources of funding is made available for this implementation." This is not an empty promise. This is a responsible commitment to our people. And it's not easy. You've got to fight hard and you've got to earn your pay to be able to say no to directors. The easy thing to do is not do anything. To go there and when they go to your fundraiser, shake their hand and say, "Hey, yeah, you know, I fought for your pay. Thanks for supporting me," that's the easy thing. But I made a commitment to the people from day one, Madam Speaker. When I asked my family to make the sacrifice of allowing me to be a candidate, and I promised myself and I promised my Lord that I will stay true to that commitment, no matter how tired, no matter how difficult, no matter how much it gets spun or misinterpreted, no matter how many untruths are put out there, I will not abandon that commitment. You know, we talked about a bill being introduced to reduce senatorial pay. Sure, I've got no problem with that. Madam Speaker, why are we always picking and choosing the easy battles? The stuff that gets us the headline and looks good? When the real stuff, the real stuff, we cannot get a yes vote on? It's going to take almost every single member of this body here today, present for this session, to be able to override this veto. But when you come here and you work for the people and you earn your pay, it means that you do the people's work. It means that you do what is best for them. It means that you try and balance out the reality of, yes, we need to give pay adjustments to our classified and unclassified, but no, we can't afford to give out $10,000 raises to our directors and deputy directors because every dollar that goes to that director is a dollar that didn't go to that classified employee. Somebody got a $5 check, a 6 cent check. Who got a $100 check? Who got a $300 check? That's inequity. That is unfair to our rank and file. That requires us to do the work, the people's work, of balancing this thing out and of also setting in the stipulations so we can make sure we afford it. It gets very difficult, Madam Speaker, to be able to put together these kind of complex solutions and articulate them in a way that we're going to make sure everybody is comfortable with and everybody understands. It gets even more difficult when, as my vice speaker, the retiring speaker, said, "We have it written in law that it's supposed to be done one way, but it's being done entirely a different way just so that they can try and ram the issue through." If implementation isn't supposed to happen until 30 days after transmittal, that means that you're not supposed to be accruing the amount. How do you cut a check the day after? How do you do that unless you were accruing it the days before, which means you implemented it days before, which means you ignored the law? And nobody should be above the law. No matter how much money you're going to throw on people's faces, you should never, ever consider yourself above the law. And that is the frightening course of events that we are undertaking, Madam Speaker. Because it happens not just in instances like this, but in other instances that we have all been through. We have procurement disputes in the millions of dollars that involve large international companies that aren't allowed to be resolved through the whole process because the Governor runs out and signs the contract. "Oh, wow, I want to make sure that this deal goes through. I'm not going to get involved in that dispute. I'm not going to let it go all the way through to resolution. I'm just going to go and sign the contract." We've seen these things happen over and over again. An absolute disregard of the law and a belief that all I got to do is throw money out there to the people and everybody's going to let me get away with it. But I believe in our people, Madam Speaker. I believe our people are smarter than that. And I believe that as senators, we have to be bigger than that. Because as representatives of the people who are supposed to be here working for them, we're not supposed to be getting marching orders. We haven't overridden a single veto in this legislature, even for things as common sense as operational continuity plans to make sure our government's able to function in case something breaks down. We can't even get those kind of things done. But I believe, Madam Speaker, in the members of this body. I believe, I believe that our people are the ones who are going to be, the ones who are going to move us, move us, because we work for them. And Bill 268 is good for them. It's responsible. It's fair. It makes sure that the money is going to be there. And regardless of how much noise is put out there, if you read it and you are truly sincere in trying to understand it, you will see that that's the truth. And I don't understand why we cannot have it both ways. Why can't we implement something that's going to be fair and that we're all going to be able to agree on? Why does it just have to be what the Governor wants? Even if it breaks the law in the way he does it? And the recommendation from the retiring Speaker from Athami is, "Oh, take it to the courts." We all know the political game with that, Madam Speaker. Take it to the courts that you can turn around and say, "Oh, he's trying to stop the raises." Those are the kind of things that make the job that we do here so sacred. Because we can either play that or we can serve. I choose to serve, and I ask every senator who chooses to serve to vote yes and override this bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Welcome, Senator. Is there anybody, is there anybody else who would like to speak? Oh, no, in charge, you closed. So, but we're missing one senator. Senator Uggan? Yeah, you're right. Yeah, so. Uggan, Senator Uggan here. So, you're right, he closed, so therefore, on the motion then, notwithstanding the Governor's objections on veto Bill 268, to send down to the voting file, no objections? On the, um, motions, so we are on Resolution 316. Senator Rodriguez, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill or Resolution, substitute Resolution Number 316 on the second reading. I'm allowed to briefly speak on it? Third reading, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're just, it's on, you're making a motion to send it to the third reading?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Resolution 316 is relative to expressing the concerns of Illes Las Alturas Guahan relative to the applicability of the Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act to Guam and requesting equitable reconsideration of its applicability to Guam by the President of the United States, members of the U.S. House of Representatives, the U.S. Senate, the Secretary of the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. And what this is really, Madam Speaker, is a compilation of about two years of roundtables we've had and informational hearings we've had with stakeholders and different members of our community. We know that PACA, also known, more commonly known as Obamacare, is a real complex law that was passed in Congress. And unfortunately, Madam Speaker, a lot of the provisions that were enacted didn't take into consideration the challenges that Guam and other territories face in implementing some of these provisions. We know the good points of this law that has already been established here on Guam. Now, if you're up to 26-year-old, you're able to still stay in your parents' insurance plan. You have expanded coverage for individuals to have access to care. We also have the 80-20 rule that ensures that a certain amount of premiums you pay in must be paid on actual medical claims, and the rest, if you don't, if it's not paid on medical claims, goes back to you as the consumer. However, there are certain provisions that really has a negative impact on the territories. And so what this resolution does is ask the federal government, speaking in one voice, together with our insurance industry, our insurance commissioner, our medical professionals, in laying out what these challenges are. They've known it. The federal government has been told many times of what the challenges are. And we know that the administration, the Obama administration, has been able to waive certain provisions, extend deadlines. And so we feel, Madam Speaker, that we speak in one voice in asking the federal government to look at the concerns we have. We know that there may be some positive changes made. And so if I may, Madam Speaker, just read the final resolve and what it is exactly this resolution is asking. And it's found on page six. It's, "The people of Guam request that the President of the United States, the U.S. House of Representatives, the U.S. Senate, and the Secretary of the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services further consider and amend as necessary the provisions of PACA so as to facilitate its equitable implementation in the territories, which must be inclusive of a determination to, number one, include Guam in the mandates and provide for the phased-in applicability of the provisions of PACA and fully provide the correlated premium subsidies and additional Medicaid subsidies; and, number two, finally address the October 16, 2013 letter the National Association of Insurance Commissioners sent to the Secretary Kathleen Sebelius, U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, regarding the inequities and challenges that Guam and the other U.S. territories are facing with implementation of PACA." And so, Madam Speaker, this resolution really does, it's just, you know, here we are, a small island territory, trying to get the federal government to hear, you know, and so what this would do is, there is an inter-agency meeting that's happening at the end of this month with governors of the insular areas in Washington, D.C. And so we're hoping to be able to have this passed and sent to them as another avenue to tell our story and to hopefully get some reprieve from some of the provisions that are negatively impacting our community. So I ask my colleagues to join me in passing this resolution. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senators. On the motion to send Resolution 316 to the third reading file without any objections, so order it on Bill 245. Speaker Pangolinen, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to just move then that Bill 245-32COR is amended by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parks, Recreation, Storage, Preservation, and Land, and further amended, and the floor will be placed in the third reading file for the vote.
Thank you very much. On that motion, without any objections, so order it. So we are in the voting file now. Notwithstanding the objections of the Governor on veto Bill 268, I can just have the clerks just read the title.
Bill Number 268-32COR is amended by the Committee on General Government Operations and Cultural Affairs and further amended on the floor. "An act to approve the Department of Administration's Implementation Plan of the Government of Guam Competitive Wage Act of 2014 and to repeal Sections 6201, 6202, and 6208 of Article II, Chapter VI, Title IV, Guam Code Annotated."
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, excused. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, excused. Senator Uggan.
On the override, yeah. No, we were, and then we now announced it, we're in the voting file. Oh, no, I did, I had her read the title. We are voting on the veto Bill 268, notwithstanding the objections of the Governor. The clerk has read the title, and we're now taking, doing roll call vote. And we are now with Senator Uggan.
Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duenez. Senator Duenez, nay. Senator Lintiaco. Senator Lintiaco, nay. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, nay. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, nay. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, excused. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, nay.
Notwithstanding the objections of the Governor in vetoed Bill Number 268-32, received seven yea votes, five nay votes, and three excused absence, vetoed Bill Number 268 failed to get the required votes to be overwritten. Bill Number 245.
Bill Number 245-32 is amended by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation and Land, and further amended on the floor, introduced by Vicente Ben C. Pangolinan. An act to amend Sections 8144, 8145, and 8149 of Article 1, Chapter 8 of Title IV, Guam Code Annotated, relative to custodians, investment agents, and bank deposits.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, excused. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, excused. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennas. Senator Duennas, aye. Senator Limtiaco. Senator Limtiaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Rusfischel. Senator Rusfischel, excused. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye.
Bill Number 245-32 received 12 yea votes and three excused absence. Bill Number 245-32 is duly passed by this body. Resolution Number 316.
Resolution Number 316-32COR is substituted by the sponsor, introduced by DG Rodriguez, Jr., BJF Cruz, CM Duennas. Relative to expressing the concerns of Ilhas Leturangguahan, 32nd Guam Legislature, relative to the applicability of the Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act to Guam and requesting equitable reconsideration of its applicability to Guam by the President of the United States of America, members of the U.S. House of Representatives, the Senate, Secretary, U.S. Department of Health and Human Services.
I just wanted to make sure before I call the vote those that this bill is, I mean, resolution is without engrossment. So roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, excused. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, excused. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennas. Senator Duennas, aye. Senator Limtiaco. Senator Limtiaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Rusfischel. Senator Rusfischel, excused. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye.
Resolution Number 316-32 received 12 yea votes and three excused absence. Resolution Number 316-32 is duly passed by this body. Senator Rodriguez, on the motion?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to adjourn today's session, subject to the call of the Speaker.
On that motion then, we are adjourned, subject to the call of the Speaker.